Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the city of Bowling Green, Kentucky. This is our regular meeting at City Hall, December 19th, 2023, at 4:30 PM. We're going to start out with the invocation, and we have a special guest tonight. We have Deputy Chief Brian Smith. He is a member of the Lost River Church of Christ, and he's a deacon, and he's the top dog chief tonight for promotions as well. So if you'd lead us in a prayer, Brian, we appreciate that.
Lord, our Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity we have this evening. Lord, we are truly blessed to be here. We thank you for the marvelous blessings that you've given to all of us. Pray, dear Lord, that you will help us as we go through this meeting. Give us wisdom and discernment, Lord, to make good decisions. We pray that in all things that your will will be done. Lord, we pray this evening for your protection over all of our public servants. Be with our police officers as they patrol our streets and our neighborhoods. Dear Lord, keep them safe, and we pray that they may do your work. And dear Lord, be with our firefighters. Keep them safe as they go to protect others and take care of the people of our community. Lord, we are truly blessed. Pray that you will be with those of our city that are suffering and in need right now. Protect them, Lord, and give them strength, give them health. Watch over all of us, Lord. We thank you so very much for your marvelous blessings, especially the blessing of your Son Jesus Christ and his sacrifice for us. Pray all this in his blessed name. Amen.
Thank you, Chief.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I know this is a special night because we have, we are flanked by purple to our right, purple to our left, because we have the newest state champions in the house. Ladies, we are going to bring you up on the stage, but I'm going to call each name by name of every name, and I want to make, are there coaches here as well? Coaches, well done. Congratulations. Bowling Green has a reputation of state champion. You just had the football team for 5A, now the cheerleaders. What a way to end the year and start the year. So congratulations to Bowling Green Independent School System. And I'm going to say these ladies' names. Kiara Williams, raise your hand if I say your name. Emily Franklin, Abigail Darling, Kendall Stamps, Mogi Bradley, Michelle Brooks, Ella Griggs, Michaela Pratt, Adeline Drain, Cadence Dunagan, Abby Mantlow, Reagan Skaggs, Claire Hood, Frankie Crabtree, Essence Reed, Ricky Lynn Marseille, Addie Day, DeZeyla Dixon, Natalie Kintowski, Eddie St. John, Ella Kate Napier, Ruth E. Milligan, Carrie Beth Bowen, Eddie Brown, Lily Bocken, Brooklyn Whitney, Annie Boyd, Alyssa Tuhey, Gillian Morell, Tucker Griffin, Harper Ferris, Sophia Ross, and Mia Monaki. And our coaches, what are your?
Bobby Dotson is our head coach, and she is a teacher at the Bowling Green High. Stephen Dotson is also one of our coaches, and we have Lola Dotson, who is our mascot. They have a winning, winning reputation at Bowling Green for their cheerleaders, and we are sure proud of our coaches and our coaches.
Once again, congratulations to the Bowling Green High Cheerleaders, state champions. So we'd like to get a photo. We're going to bring some to the back. We have this arch. We can bring some in the middle.
Some of y'all want to look in the front part.
Coaches, we'd love to have you.
They'll come around, that's the inner part here, yeah.
I think it might help.
Elsie.
We're going to stay seated just for headshot purposes here.
Well, no, Hillary is a former Bowling Green cheerleader, too, so, okay. Okay, I'm going to take one. Ready? One, two, three. Got it. Thank you all.
Congratulations in finishing your last day of school today. Enjoy your holidays. Merry Christmas, ladies. Mrs. Jackson, would you please provide a roll call, please?
Commissioner Perrigen.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Mayor Alcott.
Here.
Mr. Mizel, do you have any announcements at this time?
Well, I have an award I'd like to announce that our Public Information Office got. They recently attended the Kentucky Association of Government Communicators Conference Annual Awards of Excellence and received two first-place awards. That's for our annual report that we put out, all produced in-house, as well as a stormwater video that we put out that was also produced in-house. I'd like to thank Raina Johnson-Smith, our broadcast specialist back in the booth there tonight, Laura Harris, our graphic designer, and Debbie Highland-West, who couldn't be with us tonight, but she's our, she's mine and the mayor's executive assistant and our public information officer and leads this division. And all of their work is done in-house, and that's why they got these awards, and very proud of them and want to congratulate them.
Absolutely. Congratulations.
The only other thing I have is my usual announcement. If you are in the audience wanting to make a public comment after our regular session, please sign the register in the back corner of the room. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. All right, our first item is approval of minutes for regular meeting, December 5th, 2023.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, seconded by Commissioner Bailey. Any discussion? None at this time?
I just have a question. Should I abstain since I was absent or should I, since I've read them and watched? Okay.
All right. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-277.
Unitas Boarder approving the promotions of Angela Harp of the Fire Department and Farrah Wallace of the Public Works Department to the position of Office Associate 2.
So moved.
Seconded by Commissioner Beasley Brown, seconded by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
I'd like to ask Erin Holesy, our HR Director, to come up and make this recommendation.
Afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor. This is one of my favorite promotions. Our Office Associate career path is really important to us. Our Office Associates are the heartbeat of all of our departments, and so I really appreciate that we have a way of showing their growing expertise and their importance and their value to us by allowing them to promote through our classification schedule. So we do testing twice a year. The testing is computer-based, based on keyboarding accuracy and speed proofreading, as well as some basic Excel and Word tests as well to, just to test their ability to perform in those areas. And both that tested this year, Angela Harp from the Fire Department and Farrah Wallace from Public Works, tested, passed with flying colors, and so very excited to recommend them for promotion. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you very much, Erin. Are they here or they're not? Thank you. Any discussion? None? Roll call, please.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes, congratulations, ladies. Municipal Order Number 2023-278.
Unitas Boarder approving the promotions of Michael Bean, Matt Ferguson, and Craig White to the position of Battalion Chief, Chad Ennis, Dustin Jones, and Chase McKee to the position of Captain, and Dylan Bond, Curtis Napier, and Matt Reynolds to the position of Engineer in the Fire Department.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, seconded by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
As you all will remember, part of our FY24 budget discussions, we talked about our staffing plan needs, and Fire Department was one that we focused on, and we are, we were fortunate. Thank you all for adding the Battalion Chief two positions, and we're here tonight to announce those, and I'd like to ask Deputy Chief Brett Smith to make his recommendations. Chief?
First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity. As a thriving city we love has grown, the need for the Fire Department has to grow as well. Since 2010, the city's population has grown 25%. The department's call volume has grown 75%, and our minimum staffing has grown 13%. The growth of the city, spanning 21 miles from north to south and 13 miles from east to west, has outpaced the ability of one on-duty Battalion Chief to effectively manage. The department's response to this risk, with the support of the city management and the Commissioners, has been to establish the second Battalion Chief. Battalion 1 will consist of the northern portion of the city, stretching from the Warren Central High School area through Western's campus, through the downtown and up to the Trans Park area. That northern Battalion will be Battalion 1. The southern Battalion will consist of the portion of the city from Russellville Road and Nashville Road to the Scottsville Road and out to the Greenwood High School area. A second on-duty Battalion Chief will provide for faster arrival on scene of an incident commander, a reduced span of control, and safer operations at all fires. The need for these positions has been recognized for many years. These individuals here tonight fit the bill. Their body of work, their promotional performance, shows their value. I'm proud to recommend each of them and to say they are worthy of taking the next step in our efforts to protect the people of Bowling Green. For promotion to Battalion Chief, I recommend Michael Bean, Matt Ferguson, and Craig White. For promotion to Captain, we recommend Chad Ennis, Dustin Jones, and Chase McKee. And for promotion to Engineer, Dylan Bond, Curtis Napier, and Matt Reynolds. A few of our guys aren't able to be here tonight. Craig White, Dylan Bond, and Matt Reynolds are not able to make it due to illness, some travels for the holidays. But we have tonight Michael Bean, Matt Ferguson, Chad Ennis, Dustin Jones, Chase McKee, and Curtis Napier. I highly recommend them for promotion, and will take any questions that you may have.
You gentlemen, please stand up. Commissioners, what do you think? I'm scared not to. All right, well, let's make this official, and we congratulate each and every one of you and your families and wish you Merry Christmas and God bless you. Thank you for your service. Roll call, please.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Municipal Order Number 2023-279.
Unitas Boarder approving the probationary appointment of Amanda Johnson to the position of Financial Specialist in the Finance Department.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, seconded by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
Due to a recent resignation in the Finance Department, I'd like to ask Erin Holesy to come back up and make a recommendation to fill that position of the Financial Specialist.
Good afternoon again. First, I do want to thank Tiara Britt. She did all of the recruiting and selection and helping, but wasn't able to be here tonight for these next two appointments, so appreciate all of her efforts. Would like to recommend Amanda Johnson. She's with us tonight. If you want to stand, please. She's here with her husband, Wayland Johnson, and we received 25 applications for this position. We interviewed seven candidates. Amanda is a graduate from Franklin Simpson. She also has her associates in accounting from Damar College, and most recently has been an accounting assistant with Franklin Bank and Trust. I'm available if you have any questions.
Great, thank you, Erin. It's nice to meet you, Amanda. All right. Discussion? None? Roll call, please.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes, congratulations, Amanda. Municipal Order Number 2023-280.
Unitas Boarder approving the probationary appointment of Michael Alexander to the position of Fire Code Inspector in the Fire Department.
So moved.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, seconded by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
This position is greatly needed for a growing city inspection services to make sure structures and buildings are safe out there, and thank you for your approval during the FY24 budget for this additional position. And I'd like to ask Erin to come back up and make the recommendation for this fill.
Great, so yes, this is a new position for the year. We keep hearing growth, 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 so that is true in all areas of the Fire Department. And we received 23 applications, some familiar faces and some new faces as well in the seven interviews that we conducted, and we, Michael Alexander, former Captain Alexander, worked with the Bowling Green Fire Department for 22 years and just couldn't stay away, so we're really excited to bring him back into the Fire Department. He's with us tonight, if you can stand, Captain, and he does not have his wife with him tonight. A grandbaby trumped his appointment back to the Fire Department, but he is certainly surrounded by his fire family. So let me know if you have any questions.
Great. Questions? None? Roll call, please.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes, welcome back. Municipal Order Number 2023-281.
Unitas Boarder authorizing the continuation of an agreement, as amended, with Medbin related to employee health and third-party administrator services for calendar year 2024.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, seconded by Commissioner Perrigen. Mr. Mizel.
We have used Medbin as our third-party administrator since 2019, and they've provided very good service, and we have the opportunity just to renew for another year, starting January of '24, here in a few weeks. They came back with just a slight increase of 5% per employee per month and recommending that we renew this contract for one more year with Medbin. And Erin Holesy's here can answer any questions you might have on this one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions at this time? None? Roll call, please.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-282.
Unitas Boarder authorizing and accepting a proposal from Ernst &amp; Young LLP, EY, of Louisville, Kentucky, related to a request for qualifications for Climate Pollution Reduction Grant Consultant, RFQ Number 202426, in an amount not to exceed $595,000.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, seconded by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
I'd like to ask Andy Sosa, our Public Works Director, to come up and give you a brief summary overview of what we're going to do with part of our million-dollar grant on the Climate Pollution Reduction Grant. Andy?
Evening, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, thanks, Jeff, and citizens. So I am not Brent, I'm not Nick. Everyone's off for the holidays, so I'm going to do my best to explain this great opportunity. So a few months ago, you may remember Matt Powell and Nick talking to you about this great opportunity from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency to at least do some exploratory work to reach in to potentially get as much as $4 billion for greenhouse gas emissions. So part of that grant was awarded to the city already in the form of less than $1 million, and this is a part of that. And I want to bring Jake up to explain. As you approved this last time, the money that came in allowed us to hire Jake, and he has been taking this on full-time, so he'll talk about it, and the rest of that money will help move us forward with this part. So Jake, I'll turn it over to you.
Jake, you've transitioned roles there.
Yep. It's the first time I've ever gotten to speak at one of these. So, yeah, EY is renowned now, Ernst &amp; Young, one of the big four consulting firms. We considered three different firms to help us with this project. With EY, they have the manpower to get this done. We're facing some pretty tight deadlines, but what they're going to help us do in the coming months is there are a few big things we have to get out of the way before we can go after that aforementioned $4 billion in EPA funding. First of all, we need to develop a priority climate action plan. That's something that doesn't really exist around here. There's nothing that we've done similar to that ever in the past. So EY is going to help us put together greenhouse gas inventory. They're going to help us examine the benefits that pollution reduction measures can have to our low-income and disadvantaged communities, and they're also going to help us put together a comprehensive climate action plan, which takes that priority plan and kind of expands it over a larger timeframe. We're growing. That means more people are coming in, more people are commuting in. What are our missions going to look like in the next 20, 30, 40 years? They're also going to help us apply for those EPA dollars when it comes time. I mentioned that we are up against some deadlines. Those are very tight deadlines. We have to get that priority plan in by March 1st, and we have to apply for that money by April 1st. So we needed to bring in the big guns. That's why we're bringing in EY. But there is over $4 billion on the table here, and the EPA anticipates to administer anywhere between a dozen to two dozen grants that range between 50 to 200 million, so there's some big packages here for us to go after. And Matt Powell and I have already reached out to the folks at TBA to discuss potentially joining a coalition with the states of Tennessee, Mississippi, and Alabama to increase our odds of bringing home some of that money. We are the second smallest entity eligible to go after these funds. We're beaten out only by Grand Rapids, South Dakota. It's not going to stop us. We think we can leverage our size, but also how fast we're growing to appeal to the EPA and this money. If we get it, it does not just benefit Bowling Green, it benefits Warren County, Allen County, Butler County, Edmondson County, and all kinds of measures we can come up with to reduce pollution and improve quality of life. So if you all have your own ideas to reduce pollution in our four-county region, let me know, but that's the quick gist of what we're doing here.
Great. This is a great leadway into bigger and better things, if I understand it. And I know Commissioners have shared this at our previous strategic meetings. We're having one in January, is our continuation of expansion of greenway paths, you know, lowering emissions, bike paths, people paths, paths, you know, so people can connect the wonderful parks that we have in the county and the city. There's a grand master plan, but we have a ways to go, and we'd like to see that continuation. I know I would personally, and I believe the Commissioners have as well, and there's other things that we're excited about, but we're definitely excited about the idea, the possibilities of this.
Green is the name of the game. Greenways, green spaces. We're going to be throwing the kitchen sink at this and figuring out every single way that we can improve things around here, whether that be roundabouts, whether that be replacing old machinery with new green machinery in major manufacturing plants. There's thousands and thousands of things we can look at, and we just got to make sure we get the best of it in before March 1st.
Jacob, I guess for EY, when you're guys going to have that, you have to have a plan before March 1st. Are they creating that, I guess, climate action plan?
Yes, so what I essentially am doing, my position was also funded by that initial 1 million. I'm EY's eyes and ears on the ground here in Bowling Green.
Okay.
So they're putting together their plans, but I'm here to help make sure the right connections are made. I'm communicating with the EPA, make sure that our calculations and our reports, they're all above board. So they are putting that together, and they're working with me, and we're kind of just getting this done here in Bowling Green, and then they'll also be assisting us apply for that money by April 1st.
This is kind of one of those things that could be a win-win, because if we can get more money, and even though it's a $4 billion that we're trying to chase and kind of get, it's one of those things that we're getting money from something that can also create more money later. So it's an investment that this is actually putting into, right?
And even just having a greenhouse gas inventory for four counties that doesn't exist right now for us, so having that as a resource is great on its own. So we're getting a lot of stuff out of this.
Thank you, Jake.
One other thing is you mentioned that potentially partnering with other states we're applying, so that we have a, you know, a bigger impact and potentially a way to, you know, improve quality of life in all these areas together. I'm just curious if you all have talked about also the fact that Nashville is growing at also a very rapid pace, and are we potentially looking at, you know, some of the things that have been on the table before, like a, you know, a high-speed train from Louisville to Nashville that would stop in Bowling Green? Because I know our community would be really excited about, you know, ways to get to these bigger communities as part of that plan.
So bigger is definitely better. That's something that I think the EPA would love. They're going to be wanting ideas that catch some headlines and turn some heads. At this point, I can't, you know, just promise that, yeah, we're going to go ask for a train to take us from Louisville to the Bowling Green in Nashville, but anything you can think of is on the table here. It's just a matter of getting it in, presenting it to the EPA, and then them thinking that it's possible and providing the funds. So it's basically, it's an open book at this point.
You probably should talk to a lot of members, especially of the county government. I know when I first heard about it, like especially having a stop, I actually mentioned it to Mr. Mizel many, many months ago and saying, can we actually get it done? And it was one of the things I was going to present on January 17th to see if it could possibly be looked at. So having that, I do think is important, because I know that it can help us grow and can also reduce, you know, the green pack, the impact that we have, and it just helps us grow.
Measurable impact, and that's something that we can submit. We can say we're, we can add this, and it's going to reduce this many commuters, this many tons of carbon dioxide emissions a year, so that's something we can measure, and that's something we want to put in there.
Thank you, Jake. Good discussion. Roll call, please.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-283.
Unitas Boarder authorizing and accepting bid number 202421 for fiscal year 2024 Street Overlay Project from Scotty's Contracting and Stone LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in an amount not to exceed $1,983,157.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, seconded by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
Public Works went out for bid for the FY24 overlay of our streets, and we got one bid from Scotty's Contracting and Stone for 2.3 million. However, we had the flexibility built into the bid where we could reduce the scope. Given that we had some money left over from the FY23 overlay, we are recommending that we go with a contract of $1,983,157. In your packets is a map of all the street sections that have been prioritized and ranked to be needing overlay, and as we've explained before, we do not choose these randomly. We have methodology, more of a scientific methodology based on a number of factors of grading, the roughness of the street, the ride, all that kind of thing. And so in your packets, we have the tentative list, and we think we'll be able to do these, but it's always subject to change. We have some delays sometimes when we know there's going to be street cuts. We hold off on paving overlay to allow those street cuts to be made and prepped. So Andy Sosa is still here, can answer any of your questions on this FY24 overlay contract with Scotty's. Appreciate you putting it up on the large screen. That helps our public see where these are going, so appreciate that.
Sir, and if I could just add a couple comments. Some folks will look at this and notice that we didn't label every street. That's on purpose. In your package, you have 107 intersections that we're going to attempt to do. A lot of that depends upon the asphalt price. As that goes up, we'll be able to do a little bit less. We will replace a lot of the ADA ramps with this. And also on the map, you'll see some things that are state roads. We're not paving those state roads, we're paving the roads adjacent to those, the frontage roads. So some folks will see that and say, are you doing Scottsville Road? We're not. We're actually doing the frontage roads to that. And again, if you notice some parts of the city where there doesn't seem to be as much overlay, that's because, as Jeff has already pointed out, we have deconflicted with BGMU. They're doing significant water improvements on the north and the western part of the town. We don't want to be doing fresh asphalt and then have it ripped up, so we've deconflicted all of that as we've gone, and kudos to Melissa Cansler and Melanie Shai, who have driven every set of this multiple times to make sure we've got it right.
Thank you, Andy.
Andy, may I ask a question? And I forget, I don't know what street it was that it all was on, but I remember a lady talking to me, and I don't know if it's out there going towards Bentory, but there's a tree in the middle of it, and there's two roads. And if you look at it, she was like, the city needs to really do something about this. And I wish I knew exactly where it's at, because it looks like that there's a lot of the street that needs to be changed. So I know when you said it's subject to change, or Mr. Mizel said it's subject to change, if I can find out what street that is, could I send that to you and possibly get that looked at?
Absolutely. We absolutely can look at it, and this also doesn't deviate from public works operations, can still do certain parts of the road as well, so we have that capability. The only lymphac is when the winter gets cold, we no longer do asphalt, we can do cold patching. cold patching. So as it gets into the springtime, which is when we want to kick this off, that's when we'll be hot and heavy. But if you send it to me, yes, sir, we can look at it.
I'll find it. I'll go drive around, try to find it. But it was a while ago when she was asking me, can we get something done about this?
Sir.
Any further discussion? None. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-284.
Municipal Order Authorizing and Accepting a Proposal from Weir Constructors, Inc. of Bowling Green, Kentucky, related to a request for proposals for police cadet office renovations, RFP Number 2024-23, in an amount not to exceed $71,597.
Moved.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
This was another FY24 capital improvement project that you all approved in the budget. We are in need of renovating our cadet office down at the Police Department on Kentucky Street. The route we went with this one was a design-build project, and we got three bids. We're Constructors Scott, Murphy, and Daniel and My Projects LLC. This office is roughly 26 by 20, and we are needing to create better workspaces for the cadets when they're coming into work. And so we're going to create eight workspaces along with 20 lockers, and they're going to paint, patch, and replace carpet, put down new carpet squares in the community room as well, and all for the price of $71,597. Chief Delaney is here, can answer any questions you might have about this project, as well as Andy.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions? None. Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-285.
Municipal Order Authorizing and Accepting Bid Number 2024-25 for High Friction Surface Treatment from Ram Construction Services of Michigan, Inc. of Livonia, Michigan, in an amount not to exceed $80,420.
Moved.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
So as you all know, we have, if you're familiar with Broadway Curve, we kind of straightened, tried to straighten that curve out many, many years ago. It's as straight as it can be right now. We put the island in, did some different surfacing there around that curve, but we're still seeing quite a number of accidents, you know, taking that curve a little too fast and running into some yards along 12th Avenue. And so Andy and his staff have looked at this with Daniel Coulter, one of our construction coordinators, and we are proposing to put down kind of a pavement friction material. It's called High Friction Surface Treatment, HFST. It's supposed to give you a little bit better grip when it's wet and it's been raining along that curve. And we went out for bid for this product. It's been shown to reduce wet weather crashes by 83%, pretty good, and total crashes by 57%. So it's a high-quality aggregate that you put down on the surface of the road, the street, and we're hoping it will make a difference. We went out for bid. There were two bidders, Ram Construction Services of Michigan and Scotty's, and we went, we're proposing to go with a low bid of $80,420 from Ram Construction Services of Michigan. Andy, again, is here, worked on this, and can answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Is this a first of our ever in this endeavor?
It is the first time the city's used high friction. The state's used it on the interchange of I-165 and 65 on the on-ramps, and we've tested a lot of different options. This is the best option we think we can come up with. We don't do it throughout the entire city, because it is so expensive. This amount of money will cover about a quarter of a mile, basically from High Street to Park Street, which is where we've had four accidents in the last six months. So we're going to try it out, and we think it'll do pretty well under our plows, service life of five to seven years.
Seven. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'll tell you, Andy, this is something that's definitely needed. So on November 26, I was taking my daughter back to school, and we was on the interstate, I-65. So on mile marker 85 is exactly where they have that, it's where they're doing construction right there. So we're in stop-and-go traffic, and I could tell you, like, someone slid right behind and kind of thanked God, and they hit us. So this was just this past, like, right after Thanksgiving. They hit the back of us and stuff, and kind of thanked God that it wasn't as bad, because we passed up so many accidents. But having that traction and stopping something is very important, because we know when the water's wet and if the tires are not so good, accidents occur.
Right. Thank you. Good discussion. No further? Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-286.
Municipal Order Accepting the Intermodal Transportation Authority, Inc. Financial Statements Ending June 30, 2023.
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
I'd like to ask Meredith Rozansky with the ITA, Chamber, EDA, all our many hats she wears to come up. We are required, or we had the requirement in our interlocal agreement when we did the GO bonds on the transpark for the IT to come and report to us about their audit. So Meredith's here to give you the results of her annual audit. Meredith?
Thank you. Welcome. Always good to see all of you, so happy holidays. And one, I'll do this very briefly, just a few major things to point out. On page one of the financial report, the most important part, in the second paragraph, it says, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the authority," so we have a clean opinion. Wouldn't be here standing before you if we didn't. Over on page four starts what's called the MDNA, the Management Discussion and Analysis. That's the part of the audit report that I prepare. So it's for anybody, it's kind of in layman's terms, the activity of what happened to the organization, if somebody's not financially, you know, minded and want to read the entire audit. It just kind of gives you a snapshot, so if you get time, take a look at it. Over on page nine, just a few items to point out that are very big sort of differences from last year to this year. On the asset side of the balance sheet, you'll see $45 million addition there. You'll recall when we negotiated the AESC project for the transpark, the state put in 46, awarded $46 million worth of water and sewer upgrades. And so that money was directed to the ITA, so they actually wrote us a $46 million check. So it's sitting in the bank. If you look at the liability side of the balance sheet, you'll see an equal amount. And that's the amount due back to the state in the event that it's not spent, but there, we're paying it down over time. So as the water district, based on their contracts, are spending the money, they send us invoices, we reimburse them, it decreases that amount down to, it'll down to zero over time. But that obviously is a big new addition that is not, we've not had in prior years. Over on page 11, a few things to note there. And you'll see from last year to this year, we had a big decrease in sort of land sales. And that's because our major transaction last fiscal year was the donation of the property to the AESC project, which you'll see down below under operating expenses, it says the value of the donated property. So that was a change from prior years. The lease income and the lease expenses, that's just the flow-through information that we record. That's really the bond payments that your financial team has been making on the two bond issues. And so in the current fiscal year that we're in now, in September, the original bond issue of the transpark was paid off. So yay for that. That one is actually done, and so you'll notice that on next year's. And the other thing I would call your attention to is there's been below that donated line item, there's a write-down on land held for industrial development. Because the mission of the ITA is to do economic development, we don't ever sell property at market rate. And so when we buy property, put in roads, put in utilities, you know, obviously there's a big cost to that, but then it gets written down to really what's more of a rate that an economic development entity would sell it for. So that's what that write-down is for, to adjust that each year. The last thing I'll point out on this page is the big increase in investment income. Luckily, the state is allowing us to draw interest, put that $46 million in an interest-bearing account in the event that we have some overages related to that infrastructure. So we are accruing interest on that account. Over on the last, on the next page, page 12, again, you'll see that $46 million coming in. The 418 is what we've paid to date related to that water sewer upgrades. And then the last, the other big number, the $11,739,454, that was the contribution from the city and the county to purchase the Talgarag property, which will ultimately be the home of AESC. And so those are the major fluctuations from last year to this year on the financial statements. The only other thing I would pull your attention to, two things. On page 26, you'll see commitments and contingencies as notes to the financials. Whenever we negotiate a deal with a project, they're bound by an agreement that says you have to reach these capital investment in jobs, otherwise the discount you were afforded on the land has to be paid back. So each one of these represents a different one of those deals, and we'll stay on our financial statements until they've hit the deadline in each of those agreements for when they have to meet that capital investment in jobs. So anytime we negotiate something that's not just a, we hope they do this, we actually verify that they did spend the money, they did hire the people, and then we sort of release that contingency. And then last but not least, on page 30, so that's the independent auditor's report on internal controls. And while they don't express an opinion on that, the last line of the second to last paragraph is, "Results for our tests disclose no instances of noncompliance." So again, a clean audit opinion, and we're very grateful for the partnership that we have with the city and the county for the ITA, but I'm happy to take any detailed questions you have on the financials.
Thank you, Meredith, for that quick rendition and rundown. Appreciate your work and your commitment to the chamber and to the city and the county on this investment. Appreciate you.
Okay. No further questions? Roll call, please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes.
Merry Christmas.
Municipal Order Number 2023-287.
Municipal Order Authorizing and Approving a New American Workforce Navigator Agreement by and among the City of Bowling Green, Warren County, and South Central Workforce Development Board.
Moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
So as we had the crisis of the tornado in 2021, we did benefit, you know, in certain areas with some good things. And one of those good things was that we were able to get grant funding from the Department of Labor for a new American navigator role at the South Central Kentucky Workforce Development Board. Unfortunately, that's coming to an end this month, and so John Swords, our executive director of the Workforce Development Board, reached out to me and Judge Gorman and made his request. And I'd like to ask John, and I think he's got Brian Becker here with two, and Anna is here as well. So I'd like to ask one of you all to come up and kind of briefly give some highlights of this year and the successes and achievements of Ms. Anna.
Good evening. It's an honor, real privilege to stand before you, Commissioner Mayors, the public watching online. Jeff, thank you for the opportunity to speak. We're all very familiar with the term, if you build it, they will come, and I'm hearing growth as a theme tonight. I can tell you that, yes, as Jeff said, we did not know that tornado funding was going to launch a position like this, but this had been identified in the City of Bowling Green's welcoming plan for new Americans pre-COVID. I didn't say where the ownership of the position would lie, but it talked about a liaison type of position, very much modeled after the international community's liaison position that can be an interface and a connector between employers and the public. I'll just say the ABCs. A, getting the new Americans to access the public workforce system. Trust is a very important currency with government programs with those that are immigrants and refugees, and so we have a lot of work to do, and still do, to get them to access the workforce system and the opportunities of the benefits of those. B, better jobs. Many of the folks with limited English especially are oftentimes not working or are in temporary jobs or unable to stay in consistent jobs because of not understanding if you quit one job, it's going to look bad, and the more and more you do that. So awareness, accessing the workforce system, better jobs, and then C, our community partners, community leaders interfacing with those cultural stakeholders that really do help build the trust in the communities, again, very much modeled after the international community's liaison position. Anna came to us with a lot of that experience already and really hit the ground running. This year, we have had only over 1,000 people that she's personally assisted, nearly 600 of them, probably by the end of the month, 600, that we can say a positive employment outcome for. So I'll say, if you build it, they will come. If you fund it, they will work. So we're asking tonight that you guys do fund this position, they, meaning the board, they, meaning the new Americans that access these and the plethora of other services that are being built. The capacity has really increased since early last year. We've even got stories of people coming from Atlanta, Louisville, the network of news traveling that Bowling Green has this position and has these opportunities. So I'll let Anna say anything else.
So, good evening. So my name is Anna San Cristoful. Thank you for giving me the opportunity, the option to be here, and thank you, I can see the board for have the vision to open this position. I'm new American, so I have been here in Bowling Green and arrived directly at Bowling Green, Kentucky for 10 years, and before I lived 12 years in Montreal, Canada. So I know what the process of the immigration process is, and I know what's important is to find an organization that give the correct information, because for us, of course, the first maybe barrier we can say is the language, is English, but it's not the only barrier, is to know how the system works, is very other problem for us. So during these two years, we created many different programs, and we assisted many different, you know, new American participant. And this year, you know, we are so proud to say that we assisted, personally assisted, on more than 1,000 participants, and the most important thing is more that 50% of them are working now. So this is our goal, and this is the system that can allow this new American and new immigrant that is looking for a better future here, you know, can help and support them.
Anna, can you tell the story of the family that you?
This is only one story, you know.
Well, it's a great story at Tyson.
This is the family, you know, it's a Cuban family, four, but four members, the estrella, the mom, her husband, and two other sons that arrived here in the United States in 2022. They settled in Georgia, in Atlanta, and during October 2023, they contacted us, of course, looking for better job opportunities. But for us, was a big challenge, because it's not only move, you know, all the family, it's move the family at the same time and find a job for the four members of this family in the same place, because they have, you know, transportation issue, only one car that is happening with many new American families. Now they are, you know, working here in a city, we can say, city companies. I don't know if I can say the name of the company, but it's Tyson that supported and helped us, you know, with many new Americans. But it's the most important is they can find a job in this area, not in another, you know, counties or in any area. We are moving people, but that is, I said that last presentation, I received call from Indiana, Florida, Georgia, that people that really want to move here, to work here, and additionally asked me, oh, maybe I cannot move immediately, but can you give me the name of the same organization that I can find in this city? Or, I said, no, this is the only, you know, organization, the only board in Kentucky, in all Kentucky, and I'm not sure in all United States, that can give and support, you know, a new American in this way, you know? And very important, we work with a lot of any new Americans communities that you can find in this area, but we work inside with the community leader and with the communities, and this is our goal and, you know, our success, because we respect their culture and values, and the other hand, we give all the tool and offer all the tool, but they can, you know, build their future here.
I know, I appreciate you being there. By trade, I do some immigration law, and hablo español muy, muy piquito. I'm still trying to learn. See, I'm still trying to learn, but I've been doing immigration, so those N400s, the I-130s, the I-765s, I've done all those things. So having new Americans to stay here and want to locate in Bowling Green is a great Green is a great thing. Like everybody has said this entire night, I've heard from the police, you know, not from the police, but also from the, the fire department, growth. I've heard from Mr. Sousa, growth. I've heard from Mr. Mizel, growth. I've heard from members of this board talking about growth. And that growth has presented those opportunities and jobs, and many jobs that have been unfilled. So I welcome new Americans, you know, please, if you want to take some of these jobs and settle in Bowling Green, come here. You know, we have these jobs open. Please come here, and we welcome you and welcome you to America and welcome you to our city.
It's not only, we refer people, you know, to, for different job position. We made a mostly presentation in the Phi Warren County High School for new American students. Because it's the same that when you decide to find a job, it's a process. For the student is the same. And many of them don't have the correct information. So we try to, you know, for all new American, additionally, in the state, all time entry level, pass the next step, have better option, better opportunities inside of their job and the future when they finish high school.
You are correct. Sometimes, like when we have like Spanish language or even some languages, languages from Africa, we know Spanish may not necessarily be the language. There's Akatiko. There's different languages that are there, there's tribal languages. So that may be their native tongue. So we know sometimes when they're leaving or they're trying to do a position, having someone to, that can communicate with them effectively is, is something that can help out.
This, for example, for different languages, in my case, of course, I speak Spanish and French. And my Swahili, that is the African, you know, languages. I only know three words. It's Jambo and Santé Caribou. I have not intention to cross this border. But we work with many community leaders. And communication many times is not speak perfectly the other language. Is, you know, to have the, the spirit, the energy to communicate with other. And we try to pass the same information and the difference employers, that the most important situation is to communicate with them.
Exactly.
I just want to add, just was really grateful for your report and how you kind of shared, you know, the, not just individual impact on these families, but just on our broader community, how, you know, you were able to show that funding this position actually pays for itself and even more tax dollars coming in from these employment than it costs to bring you on. And so thank you for just helping us show how this is really making a positive impact in our community. And I'm just also really grateful because, you know, the chamber has come to us talking about, you know, we've promised these big companies that are coming, they're bringing thousands and thousands of jobs. And we needed to make sure we were doing things that are outside of the box, things that no other community had, in order to fill these thousands of jobs that are coming. And we're really grateful that you all stepped in and created this, this plan to be able to start bringing in those jobs in these new places. So I just wanted to chat, if you could share a little bit about, is this helping to fill the jobs in these new companies that maybe have already started hiring? Are you seeing that this has helped fill that gap of those jobs that we're saying that are open?
Sure. I appreciate the question. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think Tyson presented at our board meeting, they're not fully up and running yet. They have to fill over 400 jobs, but they filled over 300 of them so far very quickly. And they came to our board meeting last Thursday and presented Anna Rosen's, because many of the folks that, that, that she's brought to Tyson were our new American community and has helped them get up and running very quickly. So, you know, we do have, this is, this is hard work. There's a lot of handholding involved, not just with our new American community, but there's a lot of handholding you got to do with employers. I mean, you got, employers have got to start getting comfortable with working with limited English speakers. And that's another part of the job that, that Anna and Brian do very, very well. So we, we've got a handful of employers that have kind of embraced it and taken it on, and they are going gangbusters, and they're getting all the talent they can stand. But we still got a lot of work to do with a lot of other employers in our community to, to make sure that they're comfortable. And it, a lot of times, it comes down to English and safety and things like that. And so we respect that. But, but if you can figure out how to make it work, if you can figure out accommodations, there is an ample workforce ready to go. They want to work. And we can't say that about all of our native-born Kenticans right now. Because we look at workforce participation every day. We've studied it inside and out. We've got a data researcher on our team on loan to us from the WKU Innovation Campus, and we've really peeled it apart. But this community, the new American community, they, they want to work. And, and so it's been, it's been, having Anna has been very, very impactful.
Much.
Mayor, just want to make, one thing I forgot to mention, this is an 18-month contract, similar to what we did with Crowd South. We're going to do, finish the six months of this fiscal year, January through June, and then we'll continue from July to the following June of '25. And just for simplification, get, get it on our fiscal year budget. So I just want to make that clear. It's very similar to what we did last, last meeting with Crowd South with the 18 months.
Again, we are fortunate to have a community that partners with their county government, and this is a mutual agreement to fund this position. And Anna, congratulations. And thank you for your hard work that you've put in. Out of tragedy comes something amazing like you and your work and what it's been able to do and continue to grow. So we're proud of that.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, roll call, please.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2023-35, our first reading is nonbinding.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning attractive land containing 1.30 acres from GB, GB general business to HB highway business, located at 1806 US 31W bypass, presently owned by Goodwill Industries of Kentucky, Inc.
Moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley, or, excuse me, Carlos Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
This one is going to be an exciting project to watch as Goodwill builds a one-stop shop there on the bypass. Rezoning was 5-0 in favor of rezoning the 1.3 acres at 1806 US 31W bypass from general business to highway business. Is Ben Peterson still here?
Yes.
Ben can answer any questions you might have this one.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Thank you for being here, Mr. Peterson. Questions? It is exciting to see Goodwill. I know they've been looking a while, so glad they finally on the right path. Roll call, please.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2023-36, our first reading's nonbinding.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning attractive land containing 3.5341 acres from HB highway business to RM4 multifamily residential located on Mount Victor Lane in Old Lover's Lane, presently owned by TCP Properties LLC.
Moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
This was another unanimous recommendation from the November 2 meeting at planning and zoning, 3.5 acres out on Mount Victor Lane in Old Lover's Lane, multifamily, going from highway business to RM4 with a general development plan. I think there's already some activity out there close by, and this is a continuation of that. And Ben here can answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions at this time? None. Roll call, please.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2023-37, first reading, nonbinding.
Ordinance denying rezoning of real estate. Ordinance denying rezoning a portion of attractive land containing 3.22 acres from HB highway business to RM3 multifamily residential located on Russellville Road and Spring Hill Avenue, presently owned by Samarpan LLC.
Moved.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
Yes, this was taken up at the November 2 meeting as well. This, this is a recommendation to deny the request for rezoning. It was 5-0, a unanimous vote, denying the rezoning of 3.22 acres on Russellville Road and Spring Hill Avenue, taking it from highway business to RM3. And Ben Peterson can answer any questions on this case as well, if you have any.
No, this is unusual. It's unanimous. However, it's a no vote. So our vote for yes would be to support their no vote. We understand this. You know, we are semi quasi, quasi judicial oversight of our planning and zoning that works for both the city and the county. These individuals have found that this property is not in compliance with the National Flood Plan. And I'm going to bring Ben up to explain it just a little bit more, so we can understand that they actually found something that is necessary to put a no vote because the zoning is to eventually go to commercial and highway development.
Right. So what they denied it based on is kind of in, in the motion on, well, it's a staff report, page five. But basically, it was found not to be in compliance with the comprehensive plan, and it was based on LU 2.1.1, LU 2.3.1, and TR 2.1. It centered around a couple of things was the lack of green space and amenities proposed in the development, and then certainly flooding, flooding and water was a concern, but then also transportation and access to Spring Hill Avenue was, was specifically discussed in the, in the public hearing. So it was based on its incompatibility with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Ben.
I have, I have a question. Do we know, I guess FEMA was brought up in that, and I guess in the meeting. And do we know, can they consult with FEMA, I guess, prior to actually doing it and get like some type of opinion if this can be fixed? With that said, I did hear, I guess, when Mr. Devonport said that it would also help out two other units. But he did not address if it could cause flooding to the other units, which I did hear, because I guess a couple of people testified that, or give some, you know, their opinion about, that they're afraid that their properties will be flooded because they were using that site right now more so as a dump. So I guess my question is, could they went to FEMA prior to actually having this application to see if they could solve that flooding issue?
That's a difficult one to, to answer. I think the short answer is probably not necessarily in that, in that context. So, so not, not in that context. So typically, at this point, this is just looking at the proposed use of the land and how that fits in with the comprehensive plan. Typically, all your water questions and engineering for the water comes when they actually design the site. So the FEMA flood plane does exist partially on this site and partially on the adjacent neighbors. But the engineering has not been done at this point to really determine what would happen.
Gotcha.
But certainly, the flooding concern does exist. Pictures were presented at the public hearing showing flooding, but no engineering had been done at this point to, to know. And, you know, there's a whole lot of science behind it, is how much rain, how fast, all of that good stuff, that would have to take into account. So, so it's difficult to answer that directly.
Okay. So we don't know if it would have presented issues of flooding in areas that doesn't have any issues currently then?
Correct. So the, the, the laws are such that they wouldn't be able to make anything worse. They don't necessarily have to make it better, but, but they can't make it worse. And if they do, then there's, then there's avenues to pursue to, to, for damages purposes there. The, the testimony during the public hearing said it was their intent to make the whole situation better, not only fix the, some of the flood plain and flooding issues on their land, but also those neighboring properties. But again, that, that's, I guess, somewhat speculation at this point without the engineering being done.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Any other further questions at this time? All right. So everybody understand?
So we got to vote yes if we're agreeing with?
Supporting the commission, the planning and zoning. Okay, roll call, please.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-288.
Municipal Order approving construction and accepting maintenance of Audi commercial subdivision.
Moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
You all can remember the old Audi Golf Driving Range Golf Center. It is now subdivision. And the developers asked us to accept the streets and drainage infrastructure as city infrastructure. And so our public works staff and city-county planning and zoning staff went out and inspected it two times, November 30th and December 12th as a follow-up. Everything seems to be in order, completed in, in compliance with our standards for streets and, and pipes and everything involved with our infrastructure. We are basically accepting 1,059 linear feet or about two tenths of a mile of roadway, along with the right-of-way and associate sidewalk and stormwater infrastructure in this, this neighborhood. The storm retention basin, however, is going to be maintained by the, the private, maintained privately as required by our city code ordinances. Andy is here, can answer any questions on this acceptance of the Audi subdivision. I guess that's the name of it. Does it have a name? Audi?
That's it. That's subdivision.
That's it? Okay.
There's three streets.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. Questions? None. Roll call, please.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-289.
Municipal Order approving amendments to the City of Bowling Green procurement card policy and procedures, financial policies and procedures, and travel policies and procedures.
Moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
I'm going to ask Katie Scheller-Ward, our Assistant City Manager, CFO, to give you a summary, highlights of these proposed amendments to these policies. Katie?
So periodically, generally, annually, we're reviewing our policies in the finance department. These typically apply to staff, employees of the city, not to the general public. But we do this about once a year. This year, we realized that we needed to make some updates to our policies. Most is sort of, most of the changes are kind of surrounded, particularly in the travel policy. We have started going up with electronic forms now, instead of a paper form that requires a lot of information, a lot of duplication. We've gone electronic with a lot of that. So it required our policies to adjust to the new format of the electronic process. And then also in our financial policies, again, this is, that's more about how we do business in general. We realized that we didn't really have a section in there about how to spend public funds. So we added that section. It's, it's broad, but we wanted to identify very specifically some things that we're running into some issues with. And so we did that new section in that policy. Plus, we needed to address the new government accounting standard board requirements for their GASB 96, which is related to, in simple terms, information technology arrangements, so our IT contracts, agreements that we have. And then also making sure that, that everyone knows we're going to do our continuing disclosure requirements. We didn't have that actually in our policy, but it is something that we have to do annually. And then if we issue any new debt, we have to update as well. And we, we have done that. We just didn't have it laid out as a requirement. And with the pyramid card, most of the changes there were, were very general in nature, just cleaning up some of the language. I think we felt like there was some duplication, some unnecessary stuff in that policy. So we just tried to clean it up. But if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer any of those.
Thank you, Katie. Questions at this time? Appreciate your work on this. Roll call, please.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Well, we're checking to see if there's public comments. The next meeting will be January 16th at 2024. And a reminder to our commissioners, I believe we'll be in strategic planning on January 17. So, okay, ladies and gentlemen, have a merry Christmas and a wonderful new year. We are adjourned.